I want to say thank you for attending this district meeting and thank you for taking an interest in your city's business. I want to thank the American Legion 280 for hosting this event and right now we have how about a big make some noise come on okay we have commander Manny Garcia to say a few words from the American Legion
Thank you council member thank you everyone for being here today thank you police chief for being here thank you the fire police chief for being here as well welcome to the American Legion work in East Pasadena post 280 we've been here we're going to celebrate our anniversary in two years for our 100th hopefully you come back so we do have deep roots here in East Pasadena and Pasadena and the community around us what we do here at American Legion is to like to connect veterans back to other service members create a community create an camaraderie ship around here so we can help them with any services that they might need we have many connections with veteran service officers in the area that includes the VA county officers and local officers here in Pasadena some of which would are located at right down the street at PCC so we try to connect everyone everywhere really try to build relationships here again I appreciate you for everyone attending this meeting I appreciate for all our veterans happy belated Veterans Day I appreciate for everyone there are snacks and if you would like to rent the hall or talk about participating in the American Legion here at 280 please don't hesitate to reach out myself our adjutant Neil Sala our bar manager Lisa and our assistant bar manager Larry in the canteen thank you
I was telling Manny what a great Veterans Day we had at the city hall the other day and it was just just fabulous okay a few things please I want to introduce my field rep Noreen Sullivan she's right back there Noreen has been with me all 12 years and these events all happened because of her without her there's no there's no meeting you know what I she does a terrific job okay so this is what we're gonna do you know we had an earthquake in Malibu in July so Noreen and I we were talking about having another CERT meeting at the beginning of this coming year in 24 so look for that emergency preparation we have the fire chief is here and he can tell you all about it as well so please sign up for the CERT meeting that we're gonna have another thing is if you're not getting our electronic news get ahold of Noreen you can you can you can Google District 4 Pasadena get on District 4 and tell Noreen that you want to get our electronic news so you can be on it we don't bother you we just send it you can read it and if you don't feel like reading it you don't have to but you can keep up to date on things that are happening okay the last thing I want to say about those kind of things is getting on the Pasadena Citizen Service Center very important how many of you use that app those of you that don't Google the Pasadena Citizen Service Center and if you need to request something that's where you do it all the departments are on there and you can like whatever you want to do you make the request and it actually says submit a request from those departments and you'll hear from them by email and then that's the best way to get something done you know the old days when you used to call the city and try to get ahold of a human being and you're all frustrated well the Citizen Service Center is really the way to do it and it's been very successful so do that please okay tonight's presenters we have our city manager Miguel Marquez police chief Gene Harris director of public works Tony Olmos parks and recreation and community service director Coco Panosian and we have other staff here that our city manager will introduce and here's the plan it's always the same plan what we do is we after the presenters we all come up here and take your questions okay fair enough and then after we'll take one-on-one questions after the after we leave the stage so get your questions together but here's our policy if we can't if we don't have the answers for you we want your contact information so we can send you the answer okay we're not gonna be guessing all right first of all put your hands together for city manager Miguel Marquez
Thank you all very much and it's so nice to be here especially in this venue here that honors veterans and provides and connects veterans the services so thank you for your service if you're a veteran and again thank you for having us in this venue let me oh and I wanted to say it's just so amazing to see this is I've been here now for a little more than a year and every time I come to community meeting I'm always surprised at how full the audience gets and it's always amazes me you know when I when I came here I saw how special Pasadena was that's why I'm here and what makes it special is the level of community engagement that that's demonstrated tonight by your being here so thank you all for being here so much before I begin let me just introduce the staff who are present I have first our assistant city manager Brenda Harvey Williams why don't you stand up and give a wave I don't recall if he was mentioned but our fire chief Chad Augustine best fire chief in California he'll be speaking a little bit later tonight but our director of public works Tony Olmos and our relatively new director of parks recreation and community services Coco Panosian our deputy director of planning Jason and I always forget your last name
McKellion
McKellion Jason McKellion and finally you'll hear from our police chief Gene Harris who's standing in the back so as I said I've been here a little bit more than a year one year 11 weeks and four days not that I'm counting but a lot has happened over that year and I think the most important thing that has happened is a big shift in our executive leadership when I got here I knew there was some positions to fill but what I hadn't realized I have an executive leadership team that is comprised of 23 people three of us are appointed by the city council myself the city manager and the city clerk that means there's 20 executives that I get to appoint and I've already appointed 11 of them and on my way on my way to appointing the 12th which will be the director of department of transportation we lost our director to the city of LA recently she's dealing with highway 10 disaster I told her not to leave but she didn't listen but you'll see her on TV she's doing a fantastic job so having you know 12 out of 20 appointments is huge you know some of the big appointments is our police chief our general manager of water and power our director of parks our director of planning our director of HR all those were appointments that I got to make and a whole bunch of others so that's number one lots of change and I'm very proud of the diversity of the appointments I've made the candidates they're so incredible we work really well as a team in fact I was away when it was Hurricane Hillary but it turned into a tropical depression but I was out in Europe because when I left there was no hurricane on the horizon so I was way on the other side at another continent and my executive team came together if you don't know they opened up a shelter for the homeless we cleared all the streets you probably if you slept through the night you probably woke up and didn't think anything came through Pasadena that's how good our team was I'm very proud of the executive team the other thing that has occupied my time is the finances the pandemic was really difficult to deal with and I wasn't here for most of it I was up north in a county that had a public health department so I know what people here did but I was impressed because Pasadena that I know of has the highest vaccination rate during the pandemic of any any place I know that's largely because of our yeah let's give ourselves a hand but it was very expensive to do all of the outreach to set up the clinics to have staff go out and give those shots and that's fine you know we are here first and foremost to protect the public but that also meant that we had to catch up on a lot of things for example I'll give one good example we put so much money into the pandemic and everything that was going on we didn't have enough resources to buy new fire trucks so we have today some fire trucks that have almost 300,000 miles on them they break down too often we're spending way too much money trying to repair them it's just a Band-Aid approach for now sometimes we even have to borrow equipment from other jurisdictions and that's not acceptable the good news is we have on order four new trucks and we only have eight fire stations so we'll have get ourselves back on track with the kind of equipment we need so when you call for help we can get there right away and be secure about it let's see bring this up here so all in all on the fire department we've made about 12 and a half million dollars of investment in this first year that I've been back because it's so important that we have a fire department that can be responsive another big thing that's occurred I'm sure you guys have seen the Screen Actors Guild strikes and Kaiser had strikes and hotel workers are having strikes and I don't even know but it's a summer of strikes well we went in the opposite direction we worked really hard with our nine labor unions and I'm pleased to report to all of you that in this last year we've come to agreement with all nine labor unions and so we have labor peace on the horizon for I think that the next one expires now July 1st of 2026 so we have a fair two and a half years or three years of of labor peace baked in because we have those contracts in place and I'm very proud of that another thing that happened here in this general area but in this district is St. Luke's some of you may recall there was graffiti there was people going inside the building I ended up one day somebody sent me and I saw YouTube of folks in there doing all kinds of nonsense and I looked at it said this has got to stop I got our incredible team together there was about 20 of us in a room we talked about the issue we said what can we do to change it it's hard on the city side because we're not the owner they're private owners we we put a plan in we did inspections we really put a lot of pressure on and I'm pleased to say what ended up happening is the ownership changed and they have a new owner and they said please give us a chance you're gonna see a night and day difference between us and the former owner and indeed that's what we saw within a week's time you had a gate up you had the graffiti gone you had a lot of big change out there what's gonna happen to St. Luke's in the future it's really it's a private property so we don't know but we'll work with them to find some good use for that I can't remember if it's 11 or 14 acres but it's a big piece of property but at the very least now it's secure it has security people aren't in there you know doing some some wild things so that was a big win another big win this last year and our director of public works can address it when he's up here in more detail but we've more than doubled the amount we're spending to maintain our streets I think you know a lot of us myself included as I'm driving have to we're getting good at dodging the potholes but we shouldn't be dodging potholes we in this community deserve to have first-class streets and you know I don't remember the exact figure Tony maybe 5.7 million is what we had been investing we added 6 million on top of that so my apologies in the short term for inconvenience as they try to redo the streets but I think it's exciting that we're on a path to getting our streets to the condition they need to be in and then finally I wanted to let you know about the Sierra Madre median and you're gonna hear more about that from our director of both our director of public works and our director of parks but I want to let you know we have both a short-term plan to beautify to bring more color to make it you know as you drive by something you could be more proud of but then a long-term plan for it that that our director Tony Olmos will talk about so I don't want to be too long and as the council member said we'll be up here for questions at the end of the meeting but in the next line of order is our police chief Gene Harris so I want to invite him up to give the next set of remarks thank you so much
Good evening everybody certainly to the veterans thank you for all of your service to the service members and your families I look good for 248 years old right right Marine Corps baby number 10th right so I'm going backwards I'm like Benjamin Button I'm trying to get younger 248 and going strong but I really appreciate the opportunity to be here in front of you tonight as the leader of the police department in the context of really passing on information and being available to you to answer any of your questions or anything that you may think you want to know anything that you always wanted to ask but never did that's what we're here for the group that you'll have come before you today is here to really be that conduit between you and the things that you need in this community both with quality of life crime reduction and the reduction of fear so that is our purpose and certainly to enlighten you on things that are going on in the city and of course to be enlightened by you if there's something that we need to know I'll just give you a brief update on things that are going on in the police department that are significant one that we're always proud of is when we have a reduction in crime and violent crime in the city is down so that is something certainly to applaud in that from a quality of life perspective gives us an opportunity to be able to walk the streets and feel comfortable about those things unfortunately the flip side of that is that property crime is up if you're watching anything on TV or reading papers that's a sign of the times that we're in but we are not throwing up our hands and giving up on really impacting those criminal issues we're really trying to coordinate with some of our partners both state local and federal to kind of curb some of those issues and so we're working on it we're working to get there I think in this area dig sporting goods is is an issue that people have had to to kind of as you're going to visit that that establishment see some upticks in some of the property crime so we are paying a lot of attention to that area and making sure that we're highly visible and getting there so that we can do the prevention part of what we're talking about we're also doing some enforcement pieces but I can't give away the secrets on that or else that'll get out and people will know what we're doing and we don't want to go there but those are all really really good things with regard to the violent crime and certainly with the efforts to impact the property crime from a quality of life perspective what we've decided in this police department over the last year we just recently had a strategic planning workshop is we're gonna do a complete contemporary rebranding of the police department complete you're gonna see differences you're gonna see differences on the cars you're gonna see differences on the uniforms those will be the visual outward elements of that change but inside we're going to change things as well we're gonna make sure that we are one of the examples is our street crime unit so oftentimes sort of the dirty underbelly of law enforcement is dealing with some of the more illicit crime elements in the community and so unfortunately we have to have that so we maybe have not had the best history with regard to our gang enforcement and so what we did was we changed that a little bit we we decided to develop a gang unit with a neighborhood feel so that we combined our neighborhood action team with some of our gang investigators and we're working this more like a scalpel more like a surgeon at removing problems in the community than the heavy-handed nature that we might be used to from the 60s 70s and 80s and so those days are wrapped those days are gone the goal here is for us to come out and really be a part of this community effectuate the change and really be a part of solving the problems that you need solved in the community so SCU is one of those the other is block walks we reinstituted block walks or instituted block walks where everybody in uniform including me has to go out and meet people in the public and just simply introduce ourselves and say hello my name is we'll work our inner M and M for those younger folks in the audience hi my name is and we keep moving on and talking to people it's really important that we get to know people by name and they get to know us and so we have to broadcast those visits and count those visits and really look at at what that interaction is about we want to be known by first name when I give out my card my cellphone is on it and so we can't talk about it if we're not gonna be about it and we're here for you so that that are some of the some of the big things that we're working on as we move through to get toward the end of the year start getting busy with some of the end-of-year holiday events the other thing from a police department perspective is we're really trying to emphasize the community aspect of what it is that we do we want the we want the crime and enforcement part of it to be the far more the exception than the rule so the three Es remember these things all you military people we love acronyms so the three Es right education education engineering and enforcement we want to do the first two with regard to responding to issues so we want to educate folks we want to become educated so that we can solve a lot of the problems the engineering part of it is some of these problems before they become criminal problems have engineering solutions that we can solve a lot of things and so simple examples of that would be the rails on the bus benches so that we can't you know lounge on the bus benches and things like that there are engineering solutions that can help us get around a lot of things and then ultimately if those don't work we get to the enforcement part and that's where cops do what cops do and so we're really good at that part too and so we want to make sure that we are demonstrating a full arsenal of skills and abilities that are not just around the enforcement piece we want to get out here and talk to people we have officers in the back of the room that are gonna be here to answer questions and make ourselves available to be here for you so that's gonna be the daily thing that we do so ideally what I want to pass on to you and I don't want to get too long-winded is we are here for you we are community servants and we're gonna take that servant leadership role in the community and we're here to do what you need us to do so when you come up and talk to a police officer and you're not getting the service that you need all you have to do is call me and we'll fix that right quick right we'll get on that make sure that we're doing our thing but the officers that we have are second to none and I'll tell you the real brief story that I've said to other people when I first was in the process of getting prior to getting hired I found out about the opening and I said there is no way in heck I'm gonna work in Pasadena I actually said that to some people I said you couldn't pay me enough to work in that town I didn't understand I was getting bad scoop you know politics and all these things and all of that and I listened to it for a few minutes then I started talking to people who matter and people who count and understand what it is and why it's important that Pasadenaans be understood and get the kind of service that they deserve and then I started to change my mind a little bit and I am so glad that I did because the experience over the last 11 months has been absolutely incredible you folks were incredible getting around and talking to people has absolutely been kind of a fascinating thing for me learning and doing all of those things and certainly the team that I'm working with I think it goes understated sometimes this executive leadership team is second to none they are getting it done so it's a lot of fun working with this group and I am glad to be a part of it we're gonna be here when you get done to ask questions we'll be here till you get done or get tired but I'm gonna go ahead and take my leave and go ahead and have a seat but before I do that I'm gonna introduce our public works director the person who keeps these streets righteous so you can get in here and take care of it and for those of you who don't know Tony Olmos you know we always got to tell things about people that they don't know one day him and I are gonna have a pop locking contest
Thanks chief I didn't expect that very good so I'm Tony Olmos I'm the director of public works and I have a whole year over these gentlemen over the city manager since I've been here just about two years actually just two years I came from the city of Brea previously to here but I've been in this business now for over 30 years and time just flies and I really really love it here and as the chief was saying passing is just such a great place to work I never worked this far up in the county before most of my most of my work was over Orange County cities but coming up here has just been a blessing and I'm just really blessed with the great staff that we have and all the great projects so what I want to do today is just give you just briefly tell you about what my area responsibility is in the department and then talk a little bit about some projects just to update you on some of the more significant things that we have going on just at least you know what the latest and greatest is so first my my area responsibility is mostly in the public right of way what we say between the sidewalks of the street we're in charge of street maintenance that includes all the pavement maintenance as the city manager was talking about and that includes all the streets the trees the sidewalks the storm drains and the sewers then we also we're also in charge of the refuse division also called RRR Resort Recovery Recycling and we have in-house staff that collects all the all the trash for residential and then for commercial and industrial we have contractor contract haulers that do that part of it so that's a really big part of our operation and I'm sure you already heard about our organic recycling program and that's something you're gonna hear more and more about it as we continue moving forward and meeting that mandate we also have we took care of all the public buildings my department does that we also take care of all the of all the fleet you know the city manager talked about fire trucks we take care of the police cars fire trucks all the all the vehicles and equipment for all the other departments that operate within the city so it's a big responsibility for us to make sure that they have the resources that they need to be able to do their jobs and then we also have the engineering division they're the ones that put together all the all the documents necessary for a contractor to bid a project so like when you have the sidewalk project that we did here in the front where you have all the paving projects or park projects we put those out for bids and then once we get the bids back and city council works a contract then we oversee the construction and we try to we believe me we know it's an inconvenience when there's traffic lanes that are closed and it's a hassle getting around and we do our best to minimize the impact on all you folks as best we can and council member talked about CSC I'm happy to report that it turns 10 years in January since it's been around so we planned a lot of different things that we want to do to highlight and promote that app in the coming year and that's gonna include you know more more opportunities for you know making sure that people understand where the app is and how to use it and just and just giving some big big numbers in terms of how it's made a big difference in the community in the last 10 years so really excited about that and as the council member said you know if you after after when we break out I can show where the app is and I can show how to download it so then you can have that at your fingertips but really getting down to what I really want to do is highlight the projects for you in terms of the most significant ones the really big big one and it's unfortunate how it came about but nonetheless it's an opportunity now to make it that much better is a central library I think you all know it's all located by the civic center it's been closed since May of 21 because the walls there they're masonry walls and they're not reinforced so the decision was made back in May of 21 that for the for the safety of the public that may be using that facility we need to close it so ever since then we've had a design team that the city council has awarded a contract to and we've been working with them on developing how we're gonna fix it first of all and what are we gonna do after we fix it in terms of you know taking an opportunity to fix all the all the systems in there like the air conditioning and and then really and looking at the programming to see if there's anything that needs to be changed now now that we're gonna be in there with construction so we're going through a lot of commissions right now where we're briefing commissions we're gonna be going back to city council early next year to talk about a funding plan and they're gonna be talking about potential bond potentially but we're looking for grants right now we're looking for every opportunity to have the project funded so that we minimize the impact on the residents as much as we can so more to come on that the plan is is if if we get that funded by the end of next year that we will start construction in 25 and then it'll be open in 28 that's how long we're looking for doing a project that complex the other one that I want to update you on is even though it's not near this district is a Colorado Street Bridge it's iconic bridge in the city that that's regionally known and we have had issues there as you know with with suicides so we've been working with the consultant team to develop some barriers that will help with with being a disincentive for people that are there make it harder for them to accomplish their their goal so we have a presentation tomorrow with public safety you know it's gonna be available to view online if you want to watch that we have concepts identified we have three that we've developed I do have some cards here that will take you to a survey that actually will take you to the website that will show you what the concepts look like and there's a survey that that you can then chime in and tell us how you feel about these concepts so afterwards I have some cards that I can pass out and give those to you so you're able to participate just a few other projects and then I'll get to Sierra Madre medians I know a lot of you have a lot of interest in that Benavilla pickleball courts in Benavilla we we have enough funding to construct three of them we're looking to go to council next month for an award of contract and those will be constructed after the rainy season so by next summer we should have three more pickleball courts to add to our collection here in the city city manager talked about paving we do spend about $5 million but we really should be spending closer to $9 million a year just to to raise a pavement condition citywide on our streets and city council by authorizing this additional funding makes a huge difference but we still need more so so it's one of these things where you know we can't do all the streets that are on the list we do go by a prioritize system with the pavement management system so we just ask for your patience on that if your street's not there yet but we are doing our best to maintain the streets that we have even though they're not being paved just to make sure that we can extend them until such time that the paving can be done sidewalk program we also spend about a million and a half dollars on sidewalk improvements in the fourth district we did we're doing about 500 locations right now so that's pretty significant and and I've worked for some of the other cities you know Southern California as I talked about some big some small the amount of commitment that the city council has towards improving these sidewalks is pretty incredible to actually allocate some general funds towards these improvements is pretty impressive so we're gonna do our best to continue hitting as much as we can and again we can't do all of them all the time because we also have a prioritize system but we we thank you for your patience on that we actually did some sidewalk right in front of this building here And we actually did some sidewalk right in front of this building here. So, you know, we're really happy about that because, I mean, contract did just a really fantastic job. The last update that I want to give you. And, and I know that there's a lot more information to come is on the Sierra Madre Medians. And we've heard from the council member and we know it's a priority for the community here in terms of trying to get these medians improved to make them look better. And we know that. The complicated thing about it is that they're very expensive to do a full landscape project. So the way we're looking to break it out is we're going to, we, we have a plan that will address the longer term vision for that. That's going to be the big, really expensive part of it. And then I'm going to turn over to the director from parks to talk about what they can do in the, in the meantime. To at least help with the situation in the short term while we're developing this plan. But just to fill you in on what this big plan looks like. The medians from Michalinda all the way to the 210 are about two miles long. And they're very wide. There's not your typical street median that's 14 feet wide. These are, I think they're like 30 feet wide. So it's more like a, more like a park. So when you talk about that amount of landscaping and irrigation and everything you need to do, it costs a lot of money. So we're working on the medians that, that are between Michalinda and Washington. Working with the county to try to identify a water quality project that we can do where we can take some of the runoff from the street. And be able to filter it, capture it, some of it used for irrigation or what have you. And then being able to use some of the funds that are allocated for that and be, take advantage of that and at the same time, get some landscaping out of it. So we're working with the county now in a feasibility study to look at those, that part of it, of those medians. And then we're looking to put out an RFP here in the next, in the next month, going into early next year. To do a comprehensive plan for the rest of, for all the medians, all the way from the 210 to Michalinda. To identify what this will look like, calculate all the costs and identify some potential phasing. And with that is going to come in if we get any grants and there's, coincidentally, there's some good grants that are out there right now that we're applying for. That can potentially put a big down payment into this project and get something going for us. So we're, we just applied for one. We should be hearing in, in spring of, of next year, whether we got it or not. In summer of next year, we'll be applying for another bigger one to see if we can get some construction funds for that. If we get those, that'll help us with the bigger plan. Now, developing this comprehensive plan, it's going to have full outreach, but we'll come out to the community. Get your input on concepts. At least you'll see what we're thinking of in the long term, in terms of what types of landscaping would go in there. And how, how it would work and then top of phasing and construction costs and all that because that's really, at the end, at the end of the day. We need money to be able to build it. So we're doing our best to try to get it funded as soon as possible. Even though you don't see a lot of activity out there now, doesn't mean we're not trying. You know, we are really trying to work on it and make it happen for you. So those are really the updates that I had for you today. And as all the prior speakers said. We're completely available for questions, whether up here or one-on-one after the meeting. But I really do appreciate council member inviting me here and sharing these remarks with you. Thank you. So Coco, I'll introduce our director of Parks and Recreation, Coco.
Never follow Tony after a talk. It's a kind of tough, tough act to follow. Good evening, everyone. My name is Coco Panosian. I'm the, the new director of Parks and Recreation, I think about six weeks now? Yeah, about six weeks and two days, but as the city manager said, no one's counting anymore. I come from a Parks and Recreation background. Prior to the city of Pasadena, I was with the city of Glendale for 21 years as deputy director of their parks and operation. And I was also involved in the administration of the finance side of the business. So. And unlike the chief, when I heard Pasadena, I actually had a position, I jumped right into it. Pasadena, I grew up in Pasadena. I grew up in Washington, Allen Villa. I had a number of houses in Pasadena when I was growing up. Actually attended junior high school, a kid that, well, thank you. I thought I'm on the other side of town. I might get, you know, the booze. See, the lieutenant LT is always there to, 45-0. The last turkey tussle. I apologize. LT, I'll give you the mic afterwards. But yeah, I actually was very excited about the opportunity in Pasadena. I'm really glad I was given the, the opportunity, the chance to work with the community. We are the fund department. We're Parks and Recreation. We focus a lot on providing recreational opportunities for every age group, anywhere from, you know, toddlers, tots to the youth. As well as seniors. We have a number of programs for seniors, whether it be, you know, classes that you could take or participate in activities. With partnership with the Public Works Department, we have a number of new facilities that we recently opened up. I'm not sure if you heard the, the new pool at the Robinson Center, the John J. Kennedy Pool that was recently, you know, open for the community. It is year round. It is open. You can actually go swim in the winter. So I urge you to take a look at some of the programming we have over there and take advantage. We recently finished the, the Washington Park, the teen center that is yet to be opened up. We're finalizing final stages of the construction there. We'll be opening a new teen center for the community as well. And as far as programming go, we have social services we provide. We provide passport services, legal services and a slew of others. If there is a service that you think you need or your members of family or your neighbors need. Reach out to the Parks and Recreation Department. If we do not have that service provided within the department, we will be able to connect you with services in the community of other nonprofits that can provide that service for you. So we do partner a lot with our nonprofits. My goal is going forth as the new guy coming on board. My motto generally is let's go ahead and operate first to see how things are going. So I do an operation, operate, evaluate and modulate. So now I'm still in the operation phase. Fairly close to starting to evaluate. We started evaluating a lot of our programs, a lot of our special events and our, our procedures as well. And we're identifying things that need to be modulated, need to be changed. So pretty soon we'll start seeing some positive changes. We're looking at enhancing our programming, enhancing our communication with you, with all of you, the citizenry. We'll be looking at creating listeners by different organizations so we can communicate our programs, our events, our services. That every one of the community is fully aware. We're looking at bringing some programs back towards this way. So one of the options we're evaluating right now is the feasibility of bringing the Fall Festival back to Victory Park where it used to be. So there's a lot of fun things we're planning for in the coming weeks. The, the biggest ticket item now, as Tony mentioned, is the changes on Sierra Madre Boulevard median. Most of you know the reason why that turf was removed is years back, 2015, 2016. With the, the ordinances that came into play from the state about not being able to water ornamental turf on medians. Ornamental turf is your turf that doesn't serve recreational purpose and most medians do not serve that purpose. So the city, just like every other agency opted not to water them, start removing the turf to comply with those restrictions. And more recently, as early as I believe a month back, Governor Newsom signed it into law. So it's no longer a water district restriction. It is now an actual law that we have to comply with. And given the Mediterranean climate here, more of a desert climate, you know, this year we're expecting a lot of rain, which is positive. But eventually we're going to go back into a drought because that is what the, the climate is here in, in Southern California. So with that, the plans that Tony was talking about, public works is working on a very comprehensive plan, a much larger plan that's going to come, you know, compass from the freeway to Michalinda. But our task as Parks Department now, I've already directed my staff to look at, start assessing what can be done in the interim. Staff, but staff has been looking at it. A lot of the irrigation, which the piping that we have at that site is old, galvanized and, and corroded piping. They're old. And some of it was removed when, when the turf was removed to make way for the tubing system. As you can tell, the trees are still there. We need to water the trees. So we have the drip irrigation for the trees to make sure we sustain a healthy forest in, in our community. With that now, first assessment is evaluating what the, the needs and costs are going to be to replace the existing irrigation with some updated irrigation. Along with that, we actually have an internal gentleman who kind of designed for us a concept that we can lay out on those medians. And as Tony said, they're not your typical narrow paths. These are large medians. These are acres of medians if you do the entire stretch. So for the time being, we're looking at focusing, starting at Michalinda, kind of starting, move our way, would that be west, south? West and eventually south. We're going to take those couple of medians, start planning on doing some enhancements to the landscape. It does come at a cost. We are now looking at what that cost is going to be, what the plants are going to cost. And the general labor includes some, again, irrigation upgrades, grading, the actual labor to do the work. When we can actually do it feasibly because we would have to pull our forces away from the regular maintenance to be able to do this. And with that, if we move them all at once, you're going to impact the rest of the city. So in order to minimize the impact to the community, we're coming up with a plan that's going to be the most feasible, less impacted to the community, yet allow us the ability to landscape areas to show to this community that yes, you know, and maybe two and a half months here, no, one and a half month, soon to be two and a half. But the department cares, the city manager's office, we've been directed to look at that and that's going to be one of the high priorities for our crew to start doing that. There's a lot more we can get into. When they give me a mic, I usually don't know how and when to shut up. So I mean, I will kind of keep it at that to allow for questioning, as I believe council member Masuda said, we're all going to be up on stage. Take questions and we will stick around afterwards if there are any specific questions about, you know, the parks operation, about the maintenance operations. The other thing I can tell you is in, in, in speaking with our crew, we're going to give the Sierra Madre Boulevard medians more regular frequent maintenance to at least ensure even before we get on the re-landscaping project, to make sure that the weeds are managed and landscapes managed to more, you know, acceptable levels by the community and by my office as well. So with that, I thank you. I'm very pleased to be in this community and I look forward to working with everyone. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Linda. Thank you so much for your awesome presentations. I just wanted to ask you, they were considering on the medium on Rosemead and Foothill where there's panhandling. Putting some type of like post or something so people wouldn't stand there. And I know they were working on that. Is that going to continue? Just was curious. Thank you. I'm going to sit down. Do you need me?
Thank you for the question. Yeah, yes, my department was, has been working with the Department of Transportation on that. And we haven't, we haven't heard too much about that median lately, but for a time we had studied different alternatives. And one of the challenges with that median is that be, because the median is already there. If we put something there and if there's some panhandling and they go into the street. We were concerned that it was going to create some kind of safety issue with it, when now you're pushing them into the lanes and they might get hit by a car. So that's still something that we're talking with DOT about to see if there's any different alternatives for us to do something there. But it's still on our radar screen right now.
We appreciate it with the three E's. It's really important to, to engineer something because sometimes they do come where the light red is not.
Yes, it's on our radar screen.
My question has to do, since we were talking about the Sierra Madre median. And you mentioned the law and the restrictions. What about turning it, since it's 30 feet wide, what about helping turn it into kind of a park recreational use? I know my husband used to jog with our dog up, all the way up to Sierra Madre and back and then had to stop because of all the gopher holes. It was a threat to their, both their safety. But what about an idea like that to get around the, the law? And then I also wanted to ask about Pasadena High School. I go to the farmer's market almost every Saturday and it's just so sad to see the lack of plantings around the high school, especially right up close. I just wondered who would be in charge of that. So those are my two questions.
Well, I can take the first question, maybe part of the second question as well. As far as the Sierra Madre Boulevard medians being a park, in theory, it's a great idea because it is a large, vast, you know, acres of this property. When you actually construct it as a park, there's a safety element to be concerned with. Because you're on both sides of the, the medians, you have vehicles that can drive up to 40, 50 miles per hour. So evaluating that at the time being, it is not part of the plans. It's an idea that has come up before. But the first thing that comes to mind is what about the safety of the folks that are going to be in that park? It has to be a lot of measures taken into consideration to at least allow for us to feel comfortable and safe, to create an opportunity for people to recreate. It is an option that we, as we, you know, consider down the road, it's an option to evaluate. But you know, at this time, just given the safety of the public and the risks involved with that kind of vehicular access on both sides is not in the works at this time. I actually remember when I used to ride my bike up and down there. But you know, days have changed. So that is something we'll keep in mind. That would be the short answer to the question. Safety element and the vehicles and allowing people to get on that median does require a lot of adjustments maybe to the roadways to even accomplish that. As far as the second part, you know, PHS is located next to Victory Park. I'm not sure if you're referring to enhancements to the Victory Park side of the business. If it is, we do have, I've already visited and I know there's some enhancements that I'd like to make at Victory Park. As far as the landscaping goes, as far as overall conditions, the fields and, you know, the turf areas. You know, it is a very heavily used facility. So sometimes the lack of downtime prevents us to be able to do some of those renovations. So, but that is in the works as, as a part of our observation. But with Pasadena High School, we can relate your message to our counterparts at PHS and the district, but they are an entity on their own. And we do not have the jurisdiction to actually make any enhancements on their property. But I will take your comments on to pass it to the, the principal of the high school and let them know this is what the community had asked us to do.
Good evening. Chris Bankford, Hastings Ranch residents. I learned something this evening, that the water was turned off in 2015. Is that correct? On the median?
That is generally when most agencies turn it off. So the answer would be yes.
So my question is, it seems very reactionary. What happened from 2015 to 2020? And now we're just finally figuring out a plan. Is there a reason why it took so long to figure out what to do on the median? I mean, when the water went off, it's going to die. So I'm just curious.
So I know, I know I wasn't here in 2015, you know, when, when, when that happened, but I can speak from experience, you know, working in some of the other agencies where we went through the same thing.
Yes.
And, and when, when, when that first happened, we didn't know what was going to happen, whether we're going to be giving a mandate to, to be able to start watering again. So a lot of the cities, what they ended up doing, they ended up just waiting and seeing. And for the time being, they just tried to, they, they just went about not maintaining the median in terms of watering, but they still try to maintain the weeds. But that's the way most cities did it and they were just waiting to see if there was any change.
Yeah.
Now, after when it, after when it became more of a permanent thing, especially now that, now, now that we're saying it's law. Then cities start transitioning into more drought tolerant type of landscaping because most of the medians that were shut off that were, that had ornamental turf.
Yes.
It was grass. So then what happened was you have to change the whole perspective in terms of getting away from having grass in the medians. And having more like a drought tolerant landscaping that does require, believe it or not, more maintenance than even grass.
So my concerns today with the median would be all the moles that have all this dirt that's now going to fill up our, you know, the, the gutters are going to be full of dirt and it's going to go down the storm drain and fill up and we're going to have a mess. If you just drive up, you can see it, what the moles have done. It's all going to be dirt. It's all going to go down the street. It's all going to fill up storm drains. I just, I know that I've written many of you. I drive South Pasadena, San Marino, Arcadia, Pasadena. And I just don't know why it took so long for, but I appreciate everybody's, you know, concern about the, the Parkway.
And, and I, like I said, I wasn't here, but if, if I was here when that happened. One of the big concerns is such a big median, like we're talking about how white they are, how long they are.
Yes.
It's multi-million dollars. That's what we're looking at to do a comprehensive redo of those medians. So that's why a lot of cities wait and see. And then after, when they determine that it's a permanent thing.
Yeah.
Then at that point, you can develop something that's more, that's more in line with drought tolerant landscaping and all that. And there's a lot of, like I said, maintenance that goes along with it. Thank you.
If I may address the gopher and the mole question.
Yes.
Part of our process in going forward, it will be the remediation of the gopher challenges out there. There are mechanisms to address it and our staff's planning on that prior to getting any work done. Now, again, these medians are not designed for people to be running on, yet the, the concern is there, once you have a population, they can go to the neighboring properties or whatnot as well. So as part of our plan in getting that re-landscaping project is to address the remediation of.
So I've heard, I heard a here, a mere PHS little, so PHS kids used to run up and down the median.
I do remember that.
Now they run on New York Boulevard on the other side. It's dangerous. And it's because they, they can't use that. It's kind of sad.
But yes, we, we will be addressing the gopher problem at that, with the sites. Thank you.
Howie Zechner, I'm a local right in this neighborhood. I'd like to address the upcoming construction at the Blair Speed Shop location where they want to put in a four-story building. And what I'd like to address, we really have a parking issue on Matero, La Tierra. By, by Daisy Street. And I'd like to know why there is two-hour parking on the, on the north side of Matero between San Gabriel Boulevard and Daisy. And then on the south side of Matero from Daisy down to the Culversack. It seems we don't have enough parking now and yet we're restricting people being able to park there during the day. And of course, that just means they, they park in places that they wouldn't have to squeeze in quite so hard if that additional parking was available. Thank you. Oh, and just one other thing, the inlet and outlet at Home Depot. The inlet and outlet at Home Depot, what is going on there? Come on, you guys got a curb cut that makes it literally a challenge to get in and out of Home Depot. Hey, they're an asset. They're not the enemy. Wh- wh- who's trying to prove what? Let's, let's make that, I mean, it's one light, no, no turn signal, no nothing. It, it's, it's really gives a black eye to what you're trying to do with, uh, making those kind of curb cuts work, because that one is without a doubt the worst one in the city. Thank you.
Uh, so the first question was regarding, I believe, a project on Foothill and Daisy at the corner? That's under construction now?
Uh, well, uh, we were, we were at the design commission when it was presented. And apparently, they presented, uh, two five-thousand-square-foot retail on the bottom with, I don't remember, twenty-three or twenty-eight units on the top. The parking was going to go through the alley, through Wagner Alley. Well, that alley is a total mess because of the Starbucks, much like Foothill Boulevard ought to be named Double Double Drive by In-N-Out. They should name Wagner, uh, the In-N-Out, uh, uh, Drive, because it's, it's a mess. And then, because there's no left turn on Foothill, for people to park there, they're gonna have to come down, um, La Tierra, and then they're gonna have to make a right and go down Foothill, and then be able to, or up to the alley and then be able to access it, because nobody in their right mind is gonna try, uh, uh, too much to, uh, make a left Matero, uh, from San Gabriel. Uh, I understand why that lot needs to be developed, and, and I'm not in any way saying it shouldn't be. I'm just saying, we only have a limited amount of resources, and to take parking that is there, sitting there, and have it two hours.
Got it, okay.
What's going on? You know, why, why would we possibly do that? Uh, and, uh, and I hope the city really does look at and pay attention to that project on, uh, uh, Daisy, that, where Blair's is, because that's going to, again, impact, I'm a homeowner there, so I understand, because I'm right there, uh, very close, I mean, very close. Uh, and, uh, I just hope everything kinda meshes a little better than, than it appeared to at the design commission.
Got it, okay. And for those of you who are, um, curious, this, the property you're talking about is on Foothill and Daisy Northwest Corner, east of the Starbucks? Uh, they just started construction work on it, I believe.
No, they haven't started any yet.
Sorry. Um, so that's gonna be, um, about three, four thousand square feet of ground floor commercial, and then twenty-one units above it, and, and with the parking in the back. I can look over those plans again to see if there were any condition, what conditions and improvements were required for the parking? As far as the street parking, either that or parking on the street. Yeah, I'll have, um.
So, yeah. So we'll, we'll pass on on the parking to DOT, and then also on the, on the Home Depot, Ingris, Ingris and Egris? We'll also pass it on to DOT, since there was a technical traffic management.
That's a disgrace. That is really terrible. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Adriana Lim. I'm basically doing the same presentation that I did to the Senate, City Council about six or seven weeks ago. I represent a seventy-unit, uh, townhouse association here in Pasadena. We cannot afford our insurance. Uh, the state of California is in crisis right now. Too many insurers have pulled out of the state of California, and it is making it unaffordable for anyone who needs any type of homeowner's insurance here in our community. Um, the issue that I have with the problem our particular HOA is having is our individual policies deem us as low fire risk. But the policy that we have to take, the master policy for the HOA, has deemed us high fire risk, although we're on the other side of Pasadena High School, and Pasadena High School would have to burn down before we did. And so, because we have been deemed high fire risk, we have been canceled by Farmers Insurance, our carrier. Uh, we were paying, uh, sixty thousand dollars a year for a master policy. We have just been informed that we're going to have to go on the California Fair Plan Act, which will raise our policy to one hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, because we are deemed, commercially, we are deemed high fire risk, but individually, every single one of us has individual homeowner's insurance, is being deemed low fire risk. I know that this is an issue that's bigger than what the local city government can handle, but I really want our local officials to understand the issues that these HOAs, and there's a lot of HOAs in the city of Pasadena, are going to be having with all our insurers not wanting to issue policies here in the state of California because of the policies that our new insurance commissioner has, has obligated our, the insurers, the people who do business here for. At, at the rate California is going, we're not gonna have any rated A insurance company that is willing to insure any homeowner here, because due to climate change, they declare us a fire hazard. Again, this is just for information, but I'd like to know if, if collectively, if our community can do something, because a lot of our older HOAs are gonna be squeezed out of the market completely.
Adriana, we very much understand that that is a real concern, and really primarily based on the comments that you made at the council meeting several, was that seven weeks ago already?
I think it was about seven weeks ago.
Um, we, as a city, we don't have anything, honestly, that we can do about it individually, but what we are doing is working with our state legislators, Assemblymember Holden, Senator Portantino. We also have state lobbyists who are working on this issue for us. They are researching it. They are looking at what bills are out there, and who can we get to introduce bills that do address this very concern? Because as you mentioned, this is a problem across the entire state of California, and I meet every Monday morning, well, every other Monday morning with our state lobbyists, and it, it's real, and we actually, on Monday morning, yesterday morning, we, this was one of our topics that we covered. Um, our, our legislature is, um, about to be on a little, you know, the holiday break, but when they come back in January, we are looking for those who will be willing to author some kind of bill to look for real solutions. But as an individual city, there's not a lot we can do, but we have raised this to the level of our state legislators, and our state lobbyists are looking and trying to ban, and we have those lobbyists, so we can get together with other cities to try to push forth legislation. So while I don't have a concrete response for you, do know that, that it is a problem statewide. We are aware of it, and we're trying to do what we can at the state legislative level.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think what's most disturbing to our HOA is the, in HOA, the individual, so it's the same building with our individual policy, says that we're low fire risk, but the same company, even Farmers Insurance, that was our insurer, the entire building is deemed high fire risk. Like, we're in the same location. How can, that, that seems like it contradicts each other, and that's the issue that we're having, and now we're having to pay a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a very flimsy fire insurance policy through the state of California.
Yeah. Um, our, one of our state lobbyists told the story of her parents who are elderly. They live in a home that they've lived in for forty years. It's fully paid for. They live on the coast in Northern California, and their policy just went up to thirty thousand dollars a year.
It's, it's unaffordable for the average person.
Absolutely. So yeah, something has to be done, and we're, we're trying to do our best.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I have a question for the planning commission. I'd like to know, basically, what is the status of the Space Bank property that, uh, has proposed condominium to be built at that site? Which is a known hazardous waste from World War II, as the Navy used that to develop torpedoes and had heavy metals that creeped into the soils. Could you tell me what the status is?
Um, sure, yes. Uh, this is for the Space Bank property in two thousand eighteen, I think, is when the project was originally approved. It was for five hundred fifty units and some ground-level commercial space. Um, the approvals are, the, the next step in their process is to submit for building construction plans, uh, which they have not done that yet. Um, next year, um, they would need to submit an application to extend the approvals um, in two thousand twenty-four. So at this point, it's, you know, a, a question of, are they gonna submit for plans? Are they gonna submit for an extension? Um, or what would be the next step, and it's really in the, in the property owner developer's hands right now.
What's the, uh, difference between extension or submitting brand-new plans?
Sure. If they submit construction drawings, then that pauses the approvals from being expired. But if they don't submit any construction plans, then the approvals they got in two thousand eighteen would either expire, or they would have to submit an application to get those approvals from before, like for the architecture and the number of units in the site plan, then they would need to submit an application to have that extended.
Uh, who would be, uh, who would be overseeing the removal of the hazardous waste if it did come to construction?
If it did go through construction, it would be, um, it would be outlined in the environmental documents that they did when they did the different studies. So it depends on the different things would be, I mean, some of it would be done either by the fire department, or it would be, be done through the building department, or it depends on what the contaminants are, and who would be the, what they would call like the, the agency that would oversee it. Uh, but a lot of times, it's the fire department, um, or it could even be the, the state. I'd have to look into it for the specifics you're asking about, and then I could let you know who, who was overseeing the different pieces of it.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Victor Reel. I'm an attorney, and I'm a longtime resident of Pasadena. I live on Lambert Drive in Mr. Masuda's district. And, um, I've got some probably fairly lightweight questions, but, um, I'd like to state that I think the hardest jobs that all these new faces do are not the people, not done by the people in suits, but by the people in uniform. So, um, I commend both the chiefs for being here, and you're, everyone is welcome. Um, I have some questions about how the local ordinances are enforced. I don't understand. For example, Mr. Panosian, I notice that the city of Pasadena continues to use gas leaf blowers, notwithstanding that you all passed an ordinance at the end of April saying you're not gonna, you're outlawing them in Pasadena. And so I don't understand why. I questioned it, but the workers just say, well, that's the equipment they give us. So, are you familiar with the problem?
Uh, are you referring to workers, the city workers using?
The city workers over in Victory Park and, uh, and along the track by Pasadena High School.
Uh, allow me some time to look into that, because I do know we have gone to start using the battery-operated equipment for the blower specifically, and that's something I'll have to look and see why that's still the case. Something that could be mitigated fairly, fairly easily.
I just, I wondered whether we're virtue signaling, or whether we're really enforcing some of these ordinances. I noticed in my neighborhood, we've had, uh, some difficulties with people putting trash cans away. They sometimes sit out for three or four days on the street. People parking overnight. I know we have an, an issue with parking in Pasadena, and there's no way for a resident to verify that vehicles that are parked overnight on the streets are in fact permitted, uh, because there's no paper permit on the window. It's apparently done online via the license plate of the vehicle. Is there a way for residents to verify whether people parked in front of my house are authorized to park there or not?
A- and that will be another question for the Department of Transportation, so we will relay it along with the other, uh, messages that we heard this evening.
It's being enforced.
I mean, we don't wanna make life difficult for the police. They've got enough hard work to do, but I don't know who doesn't. Code, is it code compliance that comes?
There's a, it's part of the Department of Transportation. They have a parking enforcement section, but either way, it's good to hear it's resumed, and we'll, uh, pass the message.
And I will tell you that I write to them, and I call and leave messages with parking, and no response, so. Thank you.
And also, just to, um, regarding the leaf blowers, um, my department also includes code enforcement, so we have been getting a lot of calls this year about enforcing the leaf blowers for private property, and so we've been doing a lot of active enforcement of that, which is ongoing.
Hi. Thanks for all being here. I mean, really, this is great. I didn't even realize how new the team was in, in Pasadena, the leadership team, and so it's a really nice opportunity to, to see all of you and, and hear firsthand. Uh, so, thank you. Uh, I had a question about parking, bigger, uh, perspective, as far as there's, there's so much commercial parking, and it's used during the day, and then at night, it's empty. But it's this big, the big swaths of property, and there's so much, you know, issue neighborhood by neighborhood, area by area. Yes, there are certain parking regulations when new development comes into place, but we have a lot of older neighborhoods in Pasadena. So is there any plan, concept, beginning of negotiating, I know these are private property owners we're dealing with on the commercial property, to have more flexible parking within the existing parking that we have? That's not necessarily city-owned, it is privately owned, but that there can be better use of the existing spaces in a more flexible way? I know there are legal issues, there are always issues, takes time, not easy, but we have so much that could be used, even for overnight residential parking, that's in commercial property, that's then, you know, has to be gone by a certain time and ticketed. So that's my bigger question.
Um, in a way, you answered your own question, because there's a big difference between public and private parking, and we, and we can't unfortunately. Right, but we can't force the private, um, developments to allow public parking in their areas, and in some, in some places, there's reasons they don't want parking there overnight. It might be a potential, you know, crime issue, why a private development might not want public parking there. So we do leave that onus on the individual, um, car owner, if you will, to identify their proper parking. Most of our developments are required to have a certain amount of parking, but we know that a lot of our development came in the city way before, um, there were this many cars. And I think, um, Jason might talk about, on that a little bit, but, um, we do require overnight parking permits, or if people want to have, if they don't have enough off-street parking and for a single-family residence, or even in some multifamily, they can apply to get a parking permit on street. But for the most part, like I said, we do leave that up to individuals to address their parking needs, and I think.
Okay, then consider this a suggestion.
Thank you.
Understanding all of those challenges, um, that it be put in the toolbox for consideration. It might be parcel, it'll start parcel by parcel. I get it. This is not easy. I'm not saying it's easy. However, let's conceptually think differently about our space. Every city deals with this, so, you know, some group of lawyers are gonna get together to come, some list of, you know, a potential start. So I'll put it as a suggestion.
Sure. And also just to add, we have some tools already in place for, for our private property owners to share parking, for example. Um, and then with new projects as well, let's say if you're doing a mixed-use project, you're doing, you know, offices, you know, on the ground floor and residential above it, then you would get a, you could get a significant reduction in your overall parking, because you don't need to use the same, you don't need two spaces if one's gonna be empty half the day. Um, also, when they did the North Lincoln Plan for the city, they, they incorporated different incentives for people to better use and manage parking. Um, that's one of the things in this area, Lamanda Park, we just kicked off doing the, the long-range plan for Lamanda Park. Um, next year, we'll be kicking off that same process for East Pasadena, like the Hastings Ranch shop, shopping areas and the areas around the, um, A-line station. So that would definitely be something that we would wanna, you know, fold into those plans as well, to give the tools that, so that people wanna do it, and especially if it makes economic sense as well, as practical sense, because parking can be very expensive to construct. East Pasadena has a lot of surface parking areas that are underutilized, so we do realize that. Um, so I encourage you to participate in those plan updates.
I do wanna say something about parking. You know, many of you know that I've been walking the neighborhoods, talking to people, right? Many people have told me they don't want to stop the restricted parking. How many of you feel that we don't wanna stop the restricted parking? Okay. And the way they describe it to me, and neighbors describe it to me, is that when they're looking at night, after, you know, two o'clock, they wanna look down the street, and they don't wanna see any cars. I mean, do you feel that way, too? It makes it a lot more safer as well. That's my take on the parking. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Bill Ucrepina, thirty-five-year resident of Lambert Drive in East Pasadena. Raised our three boys there. Love East Pasadena. I want to clarify about the Space Bank property. The Space Bank property is at thirty-two oh-two East Foothill Boulevard. It's nine-point-two-seven acres. It's 9.27 acres. In 2005, the owners hired my marketing team to sell the property. We went into escrow in 2006. We've been in escrow for 17 years. The project is entitled for 550 units and 9,000 square feet of retail. There are currently 1,400 self-storage tenants on the property. As of 10 days ago, the 17-year escrow terminated. The property is no longer an escrow. My marketing team and the owners are looking at all the options, but for now, we're going to keep the 1,400 plus or minus storage tenants there. We're looking at talking to developers again and other options, but if anybody has any questions about that property, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Jonathan Horton. I, 20-year resident, used to live in Daisyville and now in Lower Hastings. Sorry to bring it up again. I had a question about the Sierra Madre median. Is it possible to remove the median, shift the north and westbound lanes, for example, inward and convert the former northmost and westmost lanes into bike or running track of sorts?
Yeah, so as far as any configuration for the lanes, I know our Department of Transportation was exploring some ideas in terms of some bike lanes and things. Now, as far as reducing the size of the median, I don't think that has come up yet, but I'll definitely share this with them to at least we could brainstorm as we're developing these designs to see if there's any possibilities of taking advantage of those things. Now, as far as making it a running, I know that it's already been said that that's not considered for a recreational facility because of some of the safety elements, but we'll take a look at whether it's a bike lane or some other ways to be able to expand the outside. That's something that we can look at.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David. I want everyone to be aware of a statistic. In the United States as a whole and remembering that trends often start in Southern California, pedestrian vehicle accidents are up 43-year high. So pedestrians related to an accident with a vehicle are at a 43-year high in the United States. My question is really about Del Mar Boulevard and how we get people to slow down. And adding lights would be something, and I know that the DOT is not here tonight. That's not good. Most of the questions are related to them. Apparently this is related to them. There should be a light at El Nido and Del Mar. People go 67 miles an hour between San Gabriel and Kinaloa. Police officer did the radar gun on the guy 67 miles an hour from San Gabriel to Kinaloa. There's two schools at Kinaloa and Del Mar. Pedestrians need to be protected. This is not about your car and your parking and your inner, you know, whatever. What about people walking their dog? And is there a plan to, I've been in Pasadena for 40 years. The vehicles are getting out of, it's beyond measure, frankly. We have to do something to get cars on their own, on their own dedicated lane. I know you've got things on Union and bike lanes, which look strange, but maybe they'll work. We have to separate cars from people. So, and I, I know the DOT is not here. Can anybody help me? Is there a plan to help people walking?
Yeah, DOT is not here, but, but one of the things that my department works with them on is once they develop an idea for a project in terms of what they want to do, then my department will design and construct it. And I know that in our capital improvement program, we have several signals that are, that we have in the capital program to construct. I'll check this location to see if it's been studied before.
It has been studied before. There's many accidents there.
So that's something we can follow up. If I, you can give me your contact information, I can find out where the status is on that study and any kind of recommendations.
I would appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Rafia Poshian. I've been in Pasadena more than 40 years in the Hastings Ranch area. I would like to know what kind of crime prevention measures are in place regarding the, the crimes that we are hearing about steal, thefts, break-ins and stores, personal property. And, you know, you can name it, so many crimes that are happening.
Well, first we go back to the three Es. We start with the education. So what we're doing is we're trying to really get a neighborhood movement so that everybody's watching out for everybody, right? We're looking out for our neighbors. We're making calls if there are suspicious activity in the neighborhood. And you can call those things in anonymously and call us and tell us, hey, there's something happening here. We would love to have an officer come out and take a look. You don't even have to be really specific. There are some sensitivities to that because sometimes we may call the police on people for certain reasons that are not appropriate. But the fact is, if, if you're feeling there's something that we need to take a look at, just call us and we can come out and take a look. And that way we can be there to take a look at those things. But we're also doing predictive policing. So we're looking at our arrests. We're looking at releases from jail and people who have frequented from a crime perspective, certain areas. And we're, we're tallying those things and using that analysis to conduct the intelligence that allows us to predict where those crimes are going to be. Unfortunately, crime is, like I said earlier in my presentation, is on the uptick a little bit for the property crimes. But we sometimes can be our own best friends by making sure that we don't leave things and opportunities for people to steal things, especially out of our cars during holiday seasons. So our community relations section is thoroughly engrossed in getting out and communicating on a regular basis, just so it becomes muscle memory. Don't leave valuables in the car. If they're not there, we tend to see that people will go elsewhere, will move on if the opportunity is removed. So ideally, we're going to communicate it, educate the public. Certainly the engineering solutions, making sure we have vehicle alarms, cutting back shrubs that hide windows and things in front of your homes, things that make your house unattractive to criminals. Lighting is always great. Cameras are always great and cameras are inexpensive now and they're web-based, so they can hold almost an infinite amount of detail. My kid, my house has 15 cameras on it and I can get them all on my phone. And so those are important elements to it. Then the enforcement part of it is we're going to be heavy in the communities, a high visibility. We're gonna, you know, we're gonna stop suspicious activity or contact folks who engage in activity. But we're going to be out there looking to, you know, to remove those elements from the community. So we have to help ourselves a little bit, but ideally, when you see something, you say something. There's this thing called pluralistic deniability and what happens in communities is we see something that we believe to be suspicious, but we go, somebody will call, somebody else will do it. Maybe they already called. I don't want to get involved. What's my exposure? All of those things that come into play. We have to understand, we got to work together and part of that is making sure we know where these issues are occurring so we can come out and engage with you. But you can feel free at any time through our Neighborhood Watch Program to get ahold of our Community Relations Section and we'll come out there and we'll talk to anybody, anytime, anywhere.
Some of the commercial properties where there, there are break-ins, it will be too late to call the police and after it has happened, you know?
Well, typically calling the police after it's happened, the benefit to that, one, it, maybe it brings some solace that the police are going to come out and we might catch those bad guys and it doesn't happen to somebody else, right? We, we, each one care about their neighbor and those kinds of things. But prevention is a big deal. That's part of the education piece and we want to come out and teach people how to crime proof or at least make their, their commercial buildings crime resistant. And the more we can do that, the better we can eliminate the opportunities for these would-be criminals to come into our, our buildings. But once it happens, we still need to call. It is late and it does hurt our feelings and we do feel violated. But if we call, we can come out and we can find the evidence and we can find the things that can help us catch that guy so he doesn't become a repeat offender or so that people can see us in the neighborhood taking, you know, active measures to prevent future crimes. So those are really important things. I myself have been a victim of crime and it, it, nobody's, everybody's vulnerable. But the idea is together we can provide a safer environment for each other. So it takes your group, it takes us, it certainly takes the, the engineering piece. Let's get some lighting, all of those things that can come into play.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Timothy O'Brien. I live on Sierra Madre Boulevard in the section between Colorado and Del Mar that also has a median and goes down to the county. So I'm extremely distressed to not hear that included in the plan for improving the, the median, which really does need to be done the whole way. That also stopped being watered in 2015. In that time, six fully grown trees have died because within two years, the drip irrigation that they replaced when they turn off the water was just stopped working, working. I mean, you can tell that because the weeds that grow around the drip irrigation stopped growing. And in fact, I drove multiple times all the way to Sierra Madre and noticed that all along the length of the whole median from the county in Del Mar, right up to Sierra Madre, where trees were dying everywhere. And, you know, it's good to be able to speak frankly since you're all new and it's not your fault, right? But to the gentleman who asked why, you know, said, why has no plan? I've asked this myself, as Mr. Masuda knows, because in that time, San Marino, while Governor Brown's instruction that no medians could water was in place and it was lifted as soon as the big rains came again, San Marino completely replaced their watering on Huntington Drive and San, and Sierra Madre Boulevard. In Arcadia, they put in a beautiful dry gardening median instead of the grass. And they've just finished in the county between San Marino and Arcadia, another plan to beautify the smaller bit of median there. So it's kind of outrageous that Pasadena is now six years later starting to have a plan that will happen whenever. I mean, nothing's been happening in this city. So that's, so my question is that, I better, I try to be brief. My question is, why is that bit of Sierra Madre Boulevard and not included in your discussion? Because those trees provide a lot of sound dampening in an area where there are a lot of apartments and a lot of people living. And also I would say grass has that effect, effect too. Some people will remember that the original plan in 2015 was to turn off the water and replace the grass with wood chips. Now, when people found that out, they were outraged and it changed, well, we'll just let the grass grow when the rain comes and we'll mow it then and we'll let it go through the summer, which is fine up to a point. But, um, and the bits where they did just put in wood chips, they're now just a festival of weeds, you know? So it was a terrible plan. Fortunately, it didn't happen. So why haven't you included the Colorado to Del Mar section in the, in the improvement to the median?
So we have been looking at this medium for a while. You know, ever since I've been here, I know it's been on the radar screen in terms of looking at the plans. And before, we're talking with Water and Power, trying to get, we're trying to get some rebates from Metropolitan Water District for moving turf. So we've been trying to get funding all along. And now that we have an opportunity for this grant, it's called Urban Greening, we are taking advantage and trying to get the most that we can. That said, you know, we've, we've been focusing in on 210 all the way Mitchell Linda. Now, the, the section south of the 210, that's quite frankly, hasn't come up yet. So let me talk it over with my staff and our team to see.
I know it has come up because I mentioned it to them.
Yeah, because I, I have not heard about that segment being, being part of this, this entire project, but that's something I'll take back to our team.
Well, that would be great because it is, it is, has exactly the same problems.
So I'll bring it back to our team.
Yeah, and it's, you know, on trees dying. I can show you on Alzadina Drive near the Lamanda Park Library where they've planted the same variety of trees, very big versions of them, four times because they keep dying because nobody comes around and waters the trees once they've been planted, so they never get to establish themselves. You know, it's, it's not just about getting new trees, it's about looking after them.
Yeah, so, so I'll give you my card afterwards and then I'll follow up with the response.
And I've got one very brief thing, sorry for the next person, about the library. When the Central Library closed, I asked several times, well, what's happening to all of the resources that were there? Because obviously Lamanda Park and, and the one in Hill Street and things like that are very small. And we were told there was going to be a temporary solution. But I'm hearing, you know, we've got all this time before the Central Library happens, but the temporary solution, as far as I know, you didn't mention and there's no sign of it. You know, there's a computer lab there that lots of people used. There are the periodicals, there are all the resource materials that can't be consulted at the moment because they're not available.
Yes, so, so what, what the Department of Library has done, they've actually set up a, a library in a, in a temporary condition at Jefferson Elementary. And they're, they're providing some of the library services from there. Now, as far as the circulation, we have a, we have a property or a building called Rose Palace that's out of, out by Raymond in the, in the southwest part of town. It's a big facility and that's, we have a lot of, a lot of book racks there. So all the collection, once, once the project is getting almost ready for construction, all the collection is going to be moved over to Rose Palace. And then they're, they're not going, that's not going to be a public access location. What's going to happen is whenever there's a book requested from that collection, it'll get routed to the proper branch to provide that, that resource. So that's the plan is to put all the collection at Rose Palace. And as far as some of the services that were provided at Central Library, that provided at Jefferson, and that some of the other branches spread out.
So I wasn't aware that the Jefferson, is that open now?
Yes.
Okay, well, perhaps a little bit more information too, to make sure we know all of this stuff because I've been at my stream. Well, thank you very much. I think it's great that there are new people with, who seem to be doing new things quickly because we will be watching.
Thank you.
First is power and water. Recently in my billing for water and power, I received a water bill which made me drop my false teeth if I had any. I received a bill for $2,000 for water. And you say, whoa. Well, the problem was I had repiped the house. I've lived in Pasadena now for 53 years. We first moved in, we repiped, but like anything, we wear out and the damn pipe burst underneath the house and I didn't realize it. I mean, I'm half-deaf, military disability, hurrah, ex-marine also, okay? And I hear water running all the time. So, you know, it's just fact of life. So along with my bill, however, I did receive a very nice letter from the water department saying that yes, they had come and checked my meter to make sure that it wasn't broken, which made me ask one question. If I was using that much water, why didn't somebody put a little hanger on my door saying, hey, neighbor, your water bill is excessive? What the hell's going on? I mean, if you had time enough to write a letter, certainly someone who came out and checked the meter would have had time to drop a little note in my mailbox and saying, your usage is out of sight. It's, it's an anomaly. So, I mean, I think that's something that should be addressed and should be taken care of, you know, particularly for those of us who are really old and have our issues with life.
And I have responsibility for Water and Power. Our general manager's not here, but I can commit that I'll bring that message back to him to look at.
And the second question is parking again, again. I live in the Las Lunes, Diodore Circle area and we're a peculiar area because for some reason or other, those two blocks have no sidewalks. We have none whatsoever. So that means around Rose Parade time, boy, it really gets congested in there. I mean, people use the streets as a, as a throughway, you know, down to the parade route. We're right on the parade route, as you well know. I mean, we're right adjacent to Sierra Madre Boulevard and, you know, and that's our neighborhood, you know, function. Everybody gets out and watches the parade. And in the past, it used to be mosted, no parking. And we were recently told that the police department or, or whomever was not going to post the no parking signs anymore. It was sort of, a sort of semi-restricted parking. But the thing is, I mean, if you have people moving up and down, there are no sidewalks. People either have to walk on other people's property, which unintended consequences, you ruin, you know, foliage, lawns, whatever, create all sorts of issues. You have cars moving in and out, there's a chance, a good chance for an accident in there. Plus the fact that since we are a sort of narrow streets in there, if God forbid I have a heart attack and I have to call fire department to come and haul my rear end out to Huntington, they have a little bit of difficulty maneuvering around in there. So my question is, why can't we put the no parking signs back in, you know, during that particular time of year? Please?
Got to be honest, I don't know. I don't have any answer to that question, but I will find out the answer for you.
Okay.
Before I leave, I'll give you my number, get ahold of me and we'll, we'll navigate that. And if there's an opportunity to find a solution to that problem, we'll certainly implement.
That's, that's a promise marine to marine, right? Okay, all right, gotcha. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for all your questions. We're going to do some one-on-one now, but before we do, Noreen reminded me that if there are some commissioners that represent District Four, please stand and be recognized. And if you are former commissioners, please stand as well. That was very important because your service is very important to us in the city, the commissioners. They really do all, they vet all the issues before it comes to the council. They really do all, they vet all the issues before it comes to the council. So thank you very much, Commissioner, you're very valuable to us. So we're going to, we're going to stop now, we're going to come out to the audience, you have some one-on-one questions, we'll be out there with you, okay? Thank you so much.